Stothard.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Festerson.
Here.
Garnett.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Jerome.
Here.
Mr. President.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Remain standing for invocation from council member.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, please be with us today and every day to provide guidance, encouragement, and understanding. Help us to focus on the work before us, to make our community better, our citizens safer, and our lives more meaningful. Help us to appreciate the public trust that those we serve have given to us and not take that trust ever for granted. In times of conflict, help us heal. In times of distraction, help us be focused. And in times of doubt, help us be strong. Please bless our community and the people we serve. Bless my fellow council members. And we humbly ask that you bless our work. Thank you. Good night.
City Clerk certificed publication of daily record on March 15th, no report pre-council or regular city council meeting, March 19th, 2013. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on our published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. And at this time, I'd like to acknowledge the city's new interim finance director and welcome to these first city council meeting at least in a while, Al Herdick. Al, welcome.
Thank you.
At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance on final rating planning board attachments, item 5 to 7 is one case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located east of 99th Street and south of Reddick Avenue from LI to R7 medium density multifamily residential district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Six is ordinance to approve a planned unit development overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And seven is ordinance to approve the development agreement. And we do have a request to lay this over five weeks and continue the public hearing.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers five, six, and seven will be continued today. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, here on behalf of Eagles Nest. I guess I just wanted to let you know why this is continuing to be laid over. There's some private covenants that actually restrict the use, but all the property owners that are affected by these covenants have agreed to amend them. They're in the process of being signed right now. It's taken longer than anticipated, so that's been the delay, and that's why we've had to continually lay this over for a while. I guess, looking back, maybe we wouldn't have put it on the council if we had, had we known that it was going to take this long to get the private covenants amended. But everything, from what I understand, has been approved by all the private parties affected by the covenant. So this should be before you where you could vote on this and get it off your agenda soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
And continue the public hearing.
Second. Roll call.
Thompson's out of the chambers. Stothard.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's laid over five weeks, six to zero.
Item number eight, ordinance to rezone property located 5613 Sewer Street from R435 single family residential district, high density to R5 urban family residential district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight begins now. Are there any proponents?
Franklin's back.
Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Thompson's back in the chambers. Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed, seven to zero. Item number nine, ordinance to rezone property located 1409 North 60th Street from R435 single family residential district, high density to R5 urban family residential district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed, seven to zero.
Ordinance on final rating planning board attachments, item number 10, ordinance to approve the Jocelyn neighborhood development housing study for the city of Omaha located in area generally bounded by Dodge Street on the north, 25th Street on the west, Harney Street on the south, and 20th Street on the east. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
The public hearing on agenda item number 10 is continued today. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Todd Heaston with New Style Development. I have with me Brian from H3 Studio from St. Louis, Missouri, did the study on this, and I wanted to have him kind of do a quick presentation for you just to let, let you know what all went into this project. And we do have our grand opening or open house tonight, this Friday, at, from four to, four to eight, so anybody, anybody can make it, come up and check it out. It's going to be great, so. Weather won't be the best, but it'll be nice. So I'll give Brian the mic.
Hi, thank you all very much. My name's Brian Taylor Robinson. I'm a senior associate with H3 Studio. We were contracted with New Style last year to complete the planning work for this project. The area is sort of immediately to the west of downtown. It's essentially bound by Dodge, by 20th Street, Harney Street, and 25th Street, and it's a very sort of underdeveloped area. What we were asked to do in that time was sort of look at the vacant land and sort of to envision with the community a neighborhood that could be there over the long term and sort of look at a few key projects that could be going on, how to sort of fit that all together into a good neighborhood. So certainly, having limited time, you know, we think the project is great. We think the area is ideal for people to live and would be sort of incredible asset to downtown, sort of connecting downtown and midtown and really sort of reviving the area. So I'm happy to answer any questions if necessary.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerome.
Yes, if you two would come on back. First, I want to continue here again with New Style and Todd to thank your company for the substantial investment that you're making in downtown Omaha, your commitment to and vision to be looking forward to future development downtown and expending the resources to help bring in the consultants to do that in an area that is underdeveloped.
Thank you. I do want to, at this point, give Nebraska Investment Finance Authority. I paid for half this study also, so.
Sure. But I would like, if you have any visuals you could put up, just to kind of show the vision of this, what this will convert to in the four or five-story buildings and the residential.
Sure. Is this going to be? This might be a little, little bit dark, but... So essentially, the area that we were charged on looking with, and forgive the page here, but this is Dodge here along the north. This is 20th, 20th Street here along the east, 25th along the west, and Harney on the south. This is the existing, this is where the Federal Reserve Building currently is. Essentially, there are a number of key pieces of the plan. I'll sort of break them down into probably the three or four most important ones. We've sort of considered a cross-street connection here to sort of separate these very, very large blocks into some smaller blocks. And then we considered essentially Farnham Street as being a critical connection between downtown and, and the Midtown Crossing. We've envisioned a series of options for this block as the future goes forward. Essentially, what we've proposed here is anywhere from four to five stories along the length of Farnham and from three to five stories along the length of, of this sort of new north-south street. The plan is really not intended, is not a very, very firm plan. It's, the plan is written to be a plan which can be flexible somewhat to how the development occurs. You know, no plans are really fixed, but this one is essentially meant to be a series of options that'll create a community, depending on if a few projects happen, if not, if, for instance, there's enhanced transit, for instance, if there's no development in a certain area, for instance, if the Federal Reserve leaves. The plan is really written to be a very flexible document which will have a result that would create a community long term. Does that sort of help? Were there any specific questions?
No, I'm familiar with the plan. I just thought it would help for people to see the plan and have it put up.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think it is exciting to have the interest to want to improve the area and now have a plan that puts in place the ability to do that with some vision and flexibility. So, thank you.
Great. You're very welcome. Thank you.
Brian, if you'd leave that up there for a moment.
Sure, absolutely.
Because I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Garnett at this time. Todd.
Todd Heaston.
Are you still aware that folks are still talking about the livestock exchange building?
That is interesting. That was a great opening that One World had down there. I was really impressed. It looks nice.
Well, I just want to let you know that the door is still open.
Yeah, sure, yeah. It is. It's doing great.
Thank you. Hi. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Brian, if you could come back up for a moment. So the cornerstone here is probably number one, right? The Highline Building, I mean, as far as?
Yes, it's clearly one of the more catalytic projects that are involved in this plan. And in a lot of ways, it was the impetus for what made us, for why New Style chose to go after this grant was because of this investment in the area. So part of this plan is to embrace the Highline as a key project.
And Todd, once again, I mean, to second Mr. Jerome's comments here, that's a wonderful development up there. I mean, that's, and we can see now what this is going to lead to is this further development, which is, my next question is, so the, all the number fifteens there, those are proposed, those would be commercial developments, or was that, would that be like individual housing, kind of apartment-style buildings, or is that why we're having this study?
The overall goal of the plan is not to say that it's sort of commercial or not. The overall goal of, of the plan is to create both a mixed-use and mixed-income neighborhood. I mean, certainly, we've learned that allocating things for a specific use is probably not a good idea, but rather to have a flexibility of a variety of uses. So in that mixed-use, essentially, it's suggesting it could be, could be residential, it could be retail on the bottom, it could be a number of just purely residential buildings, but the idea is that, that the neighborhood as a whole would be sort of a mixed-use area with neighborhood services, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
We have motion to the second. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero.
Hope to see everybody Friday.
Thank you, Todd.
Item number 11, ordinance to approve the Crossroads Area Redevelopment Plan for the city of Omaha, located in an area generally bounded by Cass Street on the north, Little Papio Creek on the west, Pacific Street on the south, and the eastern edge following 70th to Howard Street, then to 72nd and Dodge, and then to 69th back to Cass. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
The public hearing on agenda item number 11 was held on March 12th, 2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero.
Pursuant to city council rule 7H, due to no meeting being held April 2nd. Agenda items number 12 through 13 shall be laid over three weeks to April 9th for publication of public hearing. Special use permit, item number 14, resolution special use permit application submitted by Heartland Family Services for a special use permit to allow general office in an R7 PUD medium-density multifamily residential district with a planned unit development overlay located at 4318 Fort Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero.
Item 15, resolution special use permit application by Full Name Housing for a special use permit to allow general office in an R7 PUD at 4320 Fort Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero.
Liquor, oh, and pursuant to city council rule 7H, agenda item number 16 shall be laid over three weeks to April 9th for publication of public hearing. Now, liquor. Item number 17, Walmart Incorporated, Walmart number 4138, 13105 Burt's Drive, package liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific appearing here with Adrian Pope, who's in the back. If you have any questions for her, she doesn't have any record or anything, but we're here for questions. This is just a license for the grocery store, part of Walmart's, on 132nd and Maple.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Motion to approve.
Could I have the manager come up to the podium, please? Give your name and address.
My name is Adrian Pope. I am the store manager for the store at 132nd and Maple.
Adrian, Todd Mulligan.
Hello.
I just wanted, how's everything going?
Things are going great. Lots of excitement, lots of happy customers.
Okay, well, good. Well, welcome to District 7.
Thank you.
That's quite an investment on Walmart's part. We really appreciate it, because that's the first store in the area, isn't that correct?
That is. That is the first neighborhood market in Omaha. We opened the same day as the one in Bellevue, so I can't claim to be the first in Nebraska.
Okay. I, I could let you do the Walmart cheer here today, but...
Only if I had participants to help me out.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to be a greeter. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerome passes the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's adopted, 601 passing. Item number 18, AB 66 at 4926 Underwood Avenue, request permission to appoint Alphonse Bakhtip, a manager of their present package liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a quick word to my colleagues. We talked about a pre-council this morning. We always require managers to come before us on every, every application. This particular applicant was unable to be here today, but I did talk to them personally. It's just a transfer in their license. They're a good operator without any citations, and therefore, we approve.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero. Item number 19 is resolution that Big Red is granted approval to operate a satellite Keno location at 715 North 120th Street, Hallie's Lounge.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Katrina Coffey. I'm vice president of marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John Galt Boulevard, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of city council, because I am placed on consent agenda, be removed. Item removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order. On the ordinance consent, we're removing item number 23.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 22, number 20 through 22, were held on March 12th, 2013. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Liquor, oh, and pursuant to city council rule 7H, agenda item number 16 shall be laid over three weeks to April 9th for publication of public hearing. Now, liquor. Item number 17, Walmart Incorporated, Walmart number 4138, 13105 Burt's Drive, package liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific appearing here with Adrian Pope, who's in the back. If you have any questions for her, she doesn't have any record or anything, but we're here for questions. This is just a license for the grocery store, part of Walmart's, on 132nd and Maple.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Motion to approve. Second. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of city council, because I am placed on consent agenda, be removed. Item removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order. On the ordinance consent, we're removing item number 23.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 22, number 20 through 22, were held on March 12th, 2013. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Liquor, oh, and pursuant to city council rule 7H, agenda item number 16 shall be laid over three weeks to April 9th for publication of public hearing. Now, liquor. Item number 17, Walmart Incorporated, Walmart number 4138, 13105 Burt's Drive, package liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific appearing here with Adrian Pope, who's in the back. If you have any questions for her, she doesn't have any record or anything, but we're here for questions. This is just a license for the grocery store, part of Walmart's, on 132nd and Maple.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Motion to approve. Second. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you. Public hearing on agenda item number 42 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific appearing here with Adrian Pope, who's in the back. If you have any questions for her, she doesn't have any record or anything, but we're here for questions. This is just a license for the grocery store, part of Walmart's, on 132nd and Maple.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerome.
the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order. On the ordinance consent, we're removing item number 23.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 22, number 20 through 22, were held on March the 12th, 2013. Roll call.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 24 through 40 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Resolutions 24 through 40 are adopted seven to zero. Item number 41, resolution attached 1405 Harney L.C., tax center financing redevelopment project plan for the redevelopment project site located at 1405, 1407 Harney Street, with the participation in, the city's participation through the allocation of tax center financing, also including a $13,500 TIF allocation toward the downtown public improvement fund.
Public hearing on agenda item number 41 is, begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning, for you is the Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for 1405. This will comprise two buildings, 1405 and 1407. They will be replatted into one parcel. This is, 1405 is the former Quarry McKenzie Building in the downtown area. This will be a historic rehab. It's adaptively reusing the property and creating ground floor, commercial retail space, and then residential units, market rate units up above, 18 market rate units. This particular project continues to fulfill the goal of the downtown master plan, which is to bring in more residential units, more residency, and help to densify the area. So this particular project helps to continue in that. I believe the downtown master plan called for about 5,000 units. At least for the last four years, we've probably added not just in, well, basically, close to about 1,000 units. So we're really on the way, may not take much longer to hit that 5,000, but it definitely fulfills the goal that we have set out in the downtown master plan. This project is a $4.7 million investment and does include up to $633,000 in TIF. Without, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 42, resolution attached 501 Park Avenue LLC, tax center financing redevelopment project plan for the redevelopment project site located at 501 Park Avenue, with, including $25,000 in TIF allocations toward the Midtown Public Improvement Fund.
Public hearing on agenda item number 42 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, this particular project, 501 Park Avenue, again, located at that particular address in the Midtown area, is just a little north of the former TIF project, the Park Avenue Redevelopment Project Plan. That particular, the most northern building, was the Selma Building right off of St. Mary and Park Avenue. So this is a continuation of building up along the Park Avenue area, Park Avenue neighborhood, as well as the Midtown area. Again, continues to help fulfill the master plan, city's master plan, as well as the Midtown master plan, with densification, bringing in individuals who will be living in this particular area. There's a market study that has been done by this developer, and other market studies we have been seeing, that shows a strong demand for the apartment housing. And this particular plan, as I said, it supports that, it supports revitalization of our urban communities. It will involve a complete demolition and reconstruction of that particular site. Right now, there's a three-story building. This particular project proposes a new four-story apartment building of at least, I should say, a total of 149 market rate units, a mixture of one bedrooms and studios and some two bedrooms. There will be sufficient parking, there will be some public improvements that will be done along Dewey and Park Avenue, and then we will have a small public improvement fund to help with some ADA issues at certain intersections within the area that have been pointed out to us by Public Works. The developer has done a lot of study. When he looks at, he and she look at the developments that they're looking at, going after, they looked at the fact that this particular location has great walking distance to major employers, walking distance to urban entertainment areas such as Midtown Crossing, and definitely, again, supporting changes that the city has through its master plan. This is a $15.6 million investment, up to about $2.1 million in TIF. So with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Christian, if you could come up, please. I think it's important we have one of the important partners in this project come before us to recognize you for what you're doing here, in what many people, for many years, considered basically a wasted-out area of the city along Park Avenue, and we've seen what TIF can do to the south, and now you're expanding that to the north with this project with nearly 150 apartment units at market rate, which is a tremendous investment. And we've had meetings about your enthusiasm about not only where you've been in Little Italy and downtown and north downtown, but you're now excited about Midtown and hope to see that your efforts continue there. This is quite a neat project, and I don't know if you brought a little visual that you could throw up real quick, but in color, it is a, I think, something that the community should be really excited about. And just, you know, picture that along Park Avenue, Christian, and tell us just a little bit about the highlights here.
One thing that we like is ACI districts, because an ACI district means anybody else that comes in after me will be held to the same standards that we do. And we worked a lot with planning to come up with the final design, and this design, basically, if you're up in that neighborhood and drove around, you would see a lot of buildings like this of small apartment buildings, and then this sort of represents almost kind of a rowhouse effect of more of a true residential home. We're very excited about the area. If we could find three more pieces of land like this, we'd buy them. It's a very, from a market perspective, it's very deep, there's a lot of potential up there, and we like who's living up there right now and just planning on expanding that. So when we're done, it'll be a four-story building on top of a parking garage with many amenities, including a pool.
Your name, please.
Christian Christensen, 720 North 13th Street.
Thanks. Thank you, Christian. I give you best wishes to you. Do you know about when you'll break ground on this?
Our plan's July.
Great. Thank you.
Roll call.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Mr. President, we'll bring up item number 68 as an additional resolution on the supplemental agenda. It's resolution, the nomination and appointment by City Council of Jamie Gutierrez-Mora to be a member of the MECA Board of Directors to serve a five-year term is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 68 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnat?
Thank you, Mr. President. This nomination and appointment, to me, this young lady, this young professional, will bring, I think, a lot of pizzazz, a lot of spark and spunk to the MECA Board. And I'm not saying that it doesn't have it now, but the freshness that this young lady will bring, based upon, I, she's in my district, she has a business over on Q Street, she's taken a very active interest in the neighborhood, she's developing lots that have been abandoned and putting it into a campus form-type business complex over the years, and it's just amazing to watch this young lady work. So I think it would be an excellent appointment, and I would encourage my colleagues to approve. I'll make that motion.
Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I agree with Councilmember Gurnat. This is an exceptional appointment. She's a great candidate with a great business background that'll be added to the MECA Board and does bring element of diversity to one of our city's highest-profile boards, and that's important, too. So I look forward to ordering for this today.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7F, agenda item number 43 shall be laid over three weeks for publication of public hearing. Appeal bid rejections. Item number 44 is DIY holding company appeals the rejection of their bid of February 27th for OPW 52418.
Public hearing on agenda item number 44 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Mr. President, I think that Mr. Weaver may have a statement to make, just because he wanted our...
Mr. Weaver? We met with the gentleman and also with Public Works staff and with the Law Department. We had a very good discussion. We explained things, and he indicated he would not be here this afternoon. He understands, and so is withdrawing his appeal.
Thank you. Roll call.
We have a motion to deny, right?
Motion to deny.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Yeah, there was a motion. Yeah. Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Now, item 45 is a resolution contract with Jackson Complete Concrete for OPW 52418, new sidewalk construction at various locations. Is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 45 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item 46 is appeal by a DIY holding company appeals the rejection of their bid February 27th of OPW 52421.
Motion to deny. Roll call.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item number 47 is resolution that the contractor, the Jackson Complete Concrete, for OPW 52421 is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 47 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?